Newport City Regular Council Meeting is called to order at 6:00 p.m. Present at the meeting are President Chris Vachon, Councilmember Charbonneau, Councilmember Curtis, Councilmember Alfred Chase, our Treasurer, Mr. Cook, James Johnson, City Manager, Jonathan Delapierre, other staff members, GPW Superintendent, and here, Mr. Vernier, I believe, our zoning Administrator is here, and our City Council is here. Do I miss anybody else? Anybody on So before we go into the agenda items, Representative Lee Page is here, and I would like to give him the floor. He hasn't announced his people.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and City Councilmembers, and here. I just wanted to let you know that Chris Vachon, Councilmember Vachon and myself, are primary and secondary members of the Northeast Kingdom Communications Union District. And I believe you've all received letters about a future merger that's coming up, and there will be an announcement, a public hearing regarding this, in which members of the public can sit in and listen to it. That public hearing is going to take place on July 16th. And this merger with the Northeast Kingdom Communications Union District is between Central Vermont Communications Union District and the Northeast Kingdom Union District. And it's basically to combine forces, combine funding, combine expertise in doing the work of providing broadband throughout our area. It really doesn't affect Newport, because as we all know, we're pretty good as far as our broadband capabilities here. So I just wanted to let you know about this and get the word out on this upcoming merger. So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Representative. I appreciate you coming here and making that announcement. Thank you.
July 16th. Is there a time or location?
It's 6:00 to 7:30, and it'll be on Microsoft Team.
Will you send us an email with that info?
I think you already have it, but I can send it to you and the City Manager as well.
Perfect. That would be perfect. Thank you. Thank you again. First item on the agenda now, there's additions and deletions to the agenda. President Vachon?
Yes, I apologize. Did I do something? I know, City Attorney Abreu, I know there's a slight typo on the agenda. The subsections for executive session should be flip-flopped, so number four should be A2, and number five should be A3.
Thank you. President Vachon? Councilmember Charbonneau? Councilmember Curtis? Councilmember Alfred Chase? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'm going to state what's on the consent agenda, and then if anybody has any changes or questions, we'll go through that before we ask for a vote. Regular meeting minutes of June 17, 2024, payroll warrants for June 27, 2024, accounts payable warrants for June 17, 2024, and June 24, 24, 2024, and liquor licenses, vendor permits, and special events permits. Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding the consent agenda?
Yes. Councilmember? The accounts payable for June 14, Laramie Water Resources twice, and it's hard because we just get the warrants at two minutes of six, so it's hard to go through them. So do you know what these are for?
City Manager, those the new or old, past ones, and do you know what the Laramie warrants are for? If you don't, you don't...
So what was in your packet? Was it June 17 and June 24? You just said June 14, so I'm just...
No.
Come here, is this...
April and May, I believe, is what the Laramie warrants are for.
The 17th.
Sorry.
So the 17th. So here it says... So I'd have to pull the exact invoice to see what the detail is, but it looks like two invoices, one for each month. This is what I'm seeing on the detail. I can pull the invoices.
What we're going to do, and I had asked you to do that, and we're going to be pulling all of those and using, putting that on the next agenda, on the agenda item for the next council meeting. So we will be going through all of the invoices beginning from January, I believe, or whatever I had asked before. So the detail behind it is what we're going to be looking at at the next agenda item on the council meeting coming up.
Do you think they should pay it?
Well, that's up to...
So what's the $1,500 in that?
So that's, so we could repay, you know, you could vote for the consent agenda and just have those two pulls, and we can put them on for the 15th when we're dealing with all of the Laramie, or you can save even in there. So that's kind of the discussion we're having right now, is whether or not you would like those two pulls when we deal with all of the Laramie invoices.
I'm sorry, when is that? Two weeks?
Right.
Al's snowmobile for fire alarm testing? That's new to me.
Do you know what that is? The fire alarm testing for the snowmobile?
Probably should have been Al's electric, probably Allen Delivery here. Stay away from that one, but my guess is that one got put under the wrong vendor.
Me. I don't know.
Okay, so let's...
And after a year and a half, I'm still learning, why are we paying money to Great Bay Hydro? I don't know. I can answer off my head. I have to do research. What's this one? I'm just taking notes. I have no idea what we're paying them for.
So you may want to hold off on this, and we can...
Say that again? $5,000. We don't know why we're paying them.
So I would recommend that we get those answers, and you and I can discuss it, and then we, I can see.
Yeah, that's like doing the invoice and see what they were.
Right, so would you...
I mean, any of the Al's, mobile, Al's electric, that was a vendor correction, so that one. But as far as what we were paying for the other ones, I'd have to look at the invoice, and I don't know.
Public relations, $1,600 gone for...
$1,600 for John...
Public relations. To whom though?
You'll find.
Okay.
Is there a public relation?
So how would you... So how would you like to deal?
I don't know what my colleagues think. If you're going to approve this, certainly have to change the fire alarm testing. I'd like to hold Great Bay and Laramie until the next one.
Do you have that?
So hold Great Bay and Miami.
And change the vendor to be appropriate for the...
Al's, Al's.
Councilmember, are you, do you have any questions? Are you comfortable with that? You could add, did you have any other questions that you might ask, or you could... Okay, so... May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please, with the stipulated changes as identified this evening? I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. I'm just going to write up on bottom of the ass subject to...
Yeah.
Those Chris's, where you have a list of the... And then a correction of the vendor, so we'll make sure it goes into the right charter. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Newport City Elementary School Board potential executive session 1 VSA 313A2. Thank you. May I please have a motion to find the premature public general knowledge of the confidential attorney-client communications made for providing legal services to the City Council with place the city at a substantial disadvantage because disclosure of the otherwise confidential advice and communication would harm the city by waiving the city's attorney-client privilege, 1 VSA Section 313A1F.
May I clarify occasionally finally? What's the, what's the topic of the discussion? What warrants this as it being executive session under the City Council?
We're going to get there. This is first for the legal privilege.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. May I now have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications with the city attorney for the purpose of providing professional legal services, and invite the city attorney, the city manager, school board trustees, and any other school officials, and the zoning administrator into the executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A1F for the purposes of discussing real estate and other legal matters. Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but it looks like Mr. Vachon has to...
Yes.
Yeah, so we need, before we go into an executive session, we need to call our meeting to order, because we have a forum here as well, so...
Okay, I will stop after the vote, and then I will let you take the floor. So I have a motion and a second. Before we go, I'm going to let you...
We'll call Fire TV with the Newport City School Board to order 616.
Thank you. All right, second, at 616. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Those say nay. Ayes have it, and we are in executive session. We're out of executive session. No action was taken. May I please have a motion to have the school board trustees each be bonded by August 31st, 2024 in the amount of $100,000? I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Comments? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Madam Mayor, clarification. Who's going to pay for their bond? Is that going to be...
The city.
The city or the district?
The city.
The municipal side. Is that correct?
Yes.
I also have a clarification question. Who exactly are the people getting bonded?
The trustees, the school board trustees, each trustee.
All right, cool.
How many?
Five.
Go principal.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is evaluation of city council or potential executive session 1 VSA 313A3. Didn't I switch it? No, it's three. It's three. Yeah, it's three. Okay. And may I please have a motion to enter executive session, the council to enter executive session, to discuss confidential evaluation of city council pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A3.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. It should be subsection four.
Where am I turning about? He just corrected us. I made it three.
Three is the evaluation of a public official, the employment or employment of a public official. As far as I know, elected officials don't get evaluated. Then it goes on to say that by the public body shall make the final decision to hire or appoint a public officer or employee in an open meeting. That doesn't pertain. However, subsection four, a disciplinary or dismissal, dismissal action against a public officer or employee, a censure, a reprimand, anything else of that nature would be considered disciplinary. And if that is in case of the fact, then I want an open section. If you maintain section three, I'm not going to participate in what is clearly a statutory violation.
Okay, so... Did they believe?
Yeah.
Okay, so we went through this actually, and under the advice of council, it was Section 313A3 to have this discussion, and so...
It's not a discussion, it's evaluation.
I understand, but we are going in for this evaluation under Section 313A3, okay? And we have a motion, and we have a second. So I mean, it's your choice of whether you'd like to participate, of course. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Who moved it in a second?
Oh, we didn't? I thought you didn't.
I don't have any names.
Oh, forget it. I'm rolling this back. Point of order before we had to...
I need some names.
Okay, so based, your point of order is not well taken based upon advice of council, but, okay, still, may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential evaluation of a city council pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A3?
I'll move it. If there's a second, I'd like to speak to it.
So move? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second.
Counselor? I would welcome an opportunity to have a conversation among the council in which we can speak openly with one another to try and sort out exactly what's been taking place over the last month. That's not a surprise to anybody in the room, and I hope it's not a surprise to you, Kevin.
No, it's not. And I appreciate that. The reason I opt to have it in a public forum is because without any of the facts, this has already been tried in a public forum. I would like a chance to lay out my, what the facts are also.
So we do have a motion and a second. You might consider coming in, and then we are going to come out. And so after we have the executive session, you may wish to, you know, you don't know what the outcome is. It's your choice of whether or not, of course, you would like to participate. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Ayes have it. Motion is carried. We are in executive session. We're out of executive session. No action taken. The next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present, and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting. Thank you. Please be approved, the mayor, when you are recognized, when your name is called. Please come up to the microphone, state your name, your residence, and/or affiliation. Once again, you will have two minutes. I asked the City Manager to also let you know when you're down to 30 seconds in that two minutes.
Let me switch it. Okay, sure.
Ms. Gierling?
Jennifer Gierling, resident Newport, Vermont. I just wanted to revisit the personnel policy. For some reason, I thought it was going to be on the agenda tonight, but Mr. Alfred Chase indicated that it was going to be on the next agenda, and I just wanted commitment from the council that it's going to be on the next agenda, because this has been going on for weeks and months, and it needs to find some resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Latt?
Jennifer Hopkins, resident of City Newport. I wrote down unfinished business, basically, I think is what I put down. And like Jennifer said, I was going to say that the unfinished personnel policy is very distressing to me. I sat on council back. I figured it out. It's basically 40 years ago. So obviously, a lot has changed. But I think that a lot gets lost between council meetings. I think that the discussion is not always there. There's a recording policy that I think is still somewhat under discussion, unless I missed it being resolved. And I would just say that I think it is, in my mind, as a resident of the city, very distressing. There's so much seems to be brought up and is left in an unresolved state. And it just is, I find it distressing. I find the whole tone and demeanor of the council and all these rules and regulations very, very upsetting. And I just thought I would say that. And the one last thing I'd say is, when I was on council, we had a tradition which was held for years before me and years after, which is that the non-union personnel got the same benefits as the union did. And I think that probably Public Works and the police union have, you know, previous policies. They have the days off or the eight-hour overtime. And I think it is extraordinarily unfair and rude and inappropriate to treat our non-union employees with such, I'm sorry, disrespect. So that's it.
Thank you for your comment. You're welcome. Ms. Graham?
Ari Brand, resident of Newport. I just want the council to know that this whole situation that's been going on for the last month between Councilmember Charbonneau and Councilmember Curtis is pretty distressing for some of us, not really knowing exactly what's going on, not that we're privy to everything. But I was actually stopped in Walmart last week by a member of the community who does not come to council meetings because she works on Monday evenings, listens to every meeting, and she had no idea what was going on. She didn't know whether Clark was in the right, whether Kevin was in the right, what was going on. And then I hear that there really isn't any investigation happening, that it was never really official. It was just only given to the police chief to file the complaint, and then, and I've got people asking me because they know that I've come here. And talk about a disservice. I think that just as Jennifer said on her things, this is just a disservice. We know that you guys can work together, but this is causing issues. And we need to get to some, either it's done, nothing's happening, we've made up, we're all good friends again, and we're going to move forward, or do something.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Cook?
I did put my name down.
Yes, and who?
I just registered.
I'm sorry. No.
Well, thank you for registering.
No bonus at this time. Thank you.
I'm here to say Happy Canada Day to all our good neighbors in the North. I'm learning from discussions on Radio Canada that Canadians have problems, concerns, and goals similar to those of Americans. Often, however, they have approaches and perceptions associated with these similar issues that are significantly different than ours. I am praising them for their concern for each other, for the natural gifts they find coast to coast to coast. They listen to each other, think carefully, work hard as individuals to resolve or prevent problems, and are diligent in obtaining and honing any skills that can help them live in concert with their lands and provide maximum resilience for each other. Radio Canada discussions are providing a large knowledge and skill base... Radio Canada discussions are providing a large knowledge and skill base for me as a resident in an area close by and similar. They also spur me to be a more considerate and resilient resident and neighbor. Happy Canada Day to our neighbors in the North. Thank you for the many different ideas you share with your neighbors in the South.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, the next item on the agenda is new business. President Fashan?
Nothing.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
I know the city manager is busy, but I don't see a city manager report in our package. Secondly, I want to applaud, commend, and compliment the Newport City Police Department on the quick way that they handled the bank robbery. Them and New Hampshire law enforcement, I think, within 10 hours had the person captured. Okay, I gotta stop. And on new business, where are the July 4 fireworks? I've been asked that. Where are they going to be set off from?
Set off from the access road.
Yep. Because of the access road. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alfred Chase?
Nothing.
Treasurer Johnson?
I've got line of credit, signed, councilor wishes. We need to bring that up. And I have a promissory note for the governor park remediation that needs to be signed or passed. If council can sign it so I can move forward with these things.
Do you want to do one at a time?
Yeah.
Here, let's start with the remediation. Is that, which one is that? I'm trying to change my glasses. Which is the one for the remediation? Is that the?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, you need a motion for this one, or do we, did we go through this last?
This is the formal document.
Yeah, this is just the signing. We've already approved this. Great. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for that. Okay. And this also is just a formal document and note that we already authorized, or is this an additional? This is the new one?
This is a new one.
Okay.
Last year, we increased it. You did approve an increase to 1.7.
Right, and now this is going up to two?
For the next fiscal year.
So, do you want, who wants to speak to this?
So, this is the annual line of credit. My understanding is typically the city of Newport has always done a million-dollar line of credit. This year, we had to increase that line to 1.7. And looking at our cash flow with Jim, instead of having to come back and ask for more in high-up agendas, our thought was the increase in our budget should be that roughly $2 million target for what we need to cover our lowest monthly cash flow.
This will take us to where?
So, this will be for the entire fiscal year. For the '25 fiscal year.
Thoughts?
I won't be signing it. It just keeps going up and up and up. I don't know where our line of credit is, we have no information on it, we're owed money, and I haven't seen any documentation for that money. As some of the public discussed, items come up and disappear. Our city checking account now should be in an interest-bearing account. I don't know if it is. The idea of that was that it would cover a good part of the interest on this loan. I have no information on that.
Any questions, councilor?
I think the same, because there's still, like, a little more information maybe for the next meeting. I can be more specific about my questions. I'm uncomfortable signing it as well. My first question is, are we at risk in any way if we don't sign this document tonight and put it off two weeks? Is there a cash flow problem that's immediate?
There's been a cash flow problem right now. And several reasons for that. The general fund didn't spend much more than they budgeted, but the problem is that the income, they didn't get all the income in their budget. Kevin's been working on funding some revenue in still, I think. I'm not Kevin, I mean Kevin.
Jonathan.
And the other reason is the water and sewer fund. They are going to be about, between the two, they're going to be about $500,000 this year, I figure. Okay? And that's been paid by the general fund. So, there's your cash flow problem. And on top of that, we've got $225,000 in taxes that haven't been paid this year. We've totaled all that up. We've got a cash flow problem that totaled around $400,000.
So, if I could just push a little further?
Please, go ahead.
So, I guess the question I'm asking is, I was a part of the council just a month and a half or two months ago, I think, when we approved going to 1.7 million dollars. Was that a time-limited agreement that ends tonight?
Ends June 30th.
Ends June 30th. So, not having this in place, in fact, is a potential problem for the next two weeks because there's no other current agreement that allows us to extend.
Correct.
There's no money. If we don't do this, there's no money to pay the bills between now and November 15th in the tax.
Okay.
That's the whole reason for the line of credit.
I understand. And would this line of credit, how long does this go last? I don't see a date.
From next June.
This would be a one-year line of credit. Is there a way that it is possible for us to take action tonight that would avert a crisis? Because what I'd like to see is, what was cash flow like for the last year? How often did we need the cash, the extra cash flow? How quickly were we able to pay it back? And what do we project for the next year about the times when we expect to dip? And how do we project being able to pay it back in those moments? So, I'm not comfortable signing an open-ended one-year commitment tonight, but I also don't want to see us in a crisis for cash flow for the next two weeks. So, I'd love to hear a recommendation, Jim, on how we can handle that.
That could happen. We borrowed a million dollars starting last July for us, okay? We paid it back after November taxes came in, okay? We had to borrow a million dollars again for that period until May 15th. The problem is the cash flow.
I understand. Right, I'm hearing that.
When the general fund is paying, what, 75% of our problem is the water and sewer. Okay? The general fund pays those bills for the water and sewer. Okay? Consequently, we don't have the cash flow to, you know, we have to borrow the line of credit to get that money to somewhere. I'm hoping we make it all up on May 15th and through the sewer bills during the year.
So, if I could make a suggestion, it seems to me that we ought to be able to make a, take an action tonight that would extend our current line of credit, one point, at 1.7, for a month, and then ask the treasurer and the city manager to come back to us with a report that looks at month-by-month cash flow for the last year, in particular related to how often we dipped into that line of credit, and what we expect for the coming year. And I'll add a third question that I'd like to know about, which is, how much are we budgeting in interest payments? And, and do we expect that those interest payments are going to go up and therefore shift our budget as well?
I think the total interest payments on that for the year is probably around $35,000 or $40,000.
And it's been budgeted?
No.
So, that, hence my question, right?
Because the money's always been paid back.
That's exactly my point. So, I think this deserves a longer conversation. I suspect we can't have it all at the next meeting. We've got, we, every month, every week, two weeks, we have a pretty full agenda. So, I'd be willing to extend for a limited period of time, a month, maybe six weeks. But I would like a deep dive conversation into how we've been using a line of credit, and if it's going to be a regular thing that we're doing, I want to know how we're going to manage the interest payments on it.
I can tell you one.
I mean, I think last year's line of credit ended on June 30th to happen to another one. I mean, if you want it to be a $1,007,000, but, you know, you can go back to the million if you want. But I mean, I can guarantee you it'll be coming back in the next.
I understand.
Up it again.
Councilmember, do you have anything you'd like to say? Any thoughts?
Would revisiting this in a month, is that going to just kick the can down the road?
Personally, I think it is. I mean, we've got that money to operate on.
Sir?
You know, I mean, the taxes came in May 15th, that money, that money's gone. And the only thing we can rely on now is a September payment for water and sewer, which is going to be an increase, but not nearly enough in my judgment. And, you know, this is our operating fund as of the year.
One of the ones.
Until taxes came in. Water and sewer has cost us a lot of money every, a lot of money every year. And it's been that way for years, and now it finally caught up to us. I mean, last year, I had to borrow $300,000 on the line of credit on day one. And this is going to be, we're going to wind up borrowing on this day one. No doubt about it.
So, I know you want to hear this word. But I think we should take either day for a special meeting and get these answers, I mean, have this done, and then we can just bring in and deal with this because we also need to look at the real time that you did on the water sewer. And then we'd be sure that the treasurer's not going to be jammed, and we are dealing with it, and we get it done. What's your thoughts?
How long? Do we have enough money to go for a week, or two weeks, or 10 days?
Truthfully, no.
Week? Like, if we had a special meeting next week, is it good until then?
Not at all. What do you think, John? We've done over and over this several times.
Yeah, I don't know the checking account balances off the top of my head right now. I'd have to run a balance sheet, but we're coming down the wire with this.
So, I agree with Rick. How much would we need at the moment? Like, I would be willing to sign a document if you needed a half a million dollars. So, I would sign that document so we could do a better in-depth discussion.
Well, I mean, I mean, we'll settle for the million bucks if you want to go back to the, you know, the million bucks. I'll be back here again.
Well, my thought was if we could meet July 8th, which is Monday?
Yes. Whatever you want to do.
Are you, are you safe there? We meet July 8th? Can you, can you talk to the bank for X, you know, I'm saying?
Jonathan and I have talked about this several times, and I'm afraid we're going to run a deficit this year if we don't do something.
If we don't do something today, or we don't do something Monday?
Well, what, money there is left in the checking account is basically gone.
So, my thought now is if we extend the line of credit for a million dollars, can still have that special meeting, you know, we, if I still could do.
Yeah, I have a problem.
Decide to.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
So, my other question is, where do we stand currently? If the line of credit has come to an end as of 30th of June, does that mean we don't owe any money on that line of credit at the moment?
We need to pay it all back.
As in, we owe 1.7 right now?
No, no. We owe about, I don't know, probably $700,000. That's the whole reason for this line of credit. We need that to pay the old one off.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yeah, that's exactly.
There's your deficit.
I get it.
It hasn't happened yet, so I may be, I may not be completely accurate, but that's my feeling as a friend. And like I said, most of that is paying for water and sewer.
So, if we pass a million-dollar stock act tonight?
$700,000 of it's gone.
$700,000 is available. $300,000 would be available to pay the bills for the next week to 10 days.
Your warrants for $267,000.
That's what I'm trying to get to. Thank you. All right. So, it doesn't sound like a million is enough.
Correct.
So, what we probably need to do is extend, I would be in favor tonight of extending the bitter pill that we already did a month ago, or 10, or six weeks ago, at 1.7, and buy ourselves some time, and then commit that we're going to sit down with you and really work on what the underlying issue is here, because clearly there is one.
There is one. There has been one for several years.
I get it.
We've talked about this before.
Well, we know that. That's what we're working on, and that's what we're going to bring up.
I don't want to create a crisis.
Mayor and I have discussed this, and time is gone. Something's got to be done.
Yep.
We can't go on to, every year this goes by, that's a problem.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thoughts, Sarah?
I mean, I know the $2 million scares everybody, but if it was me, I'd sign that. We're only going to use what we have to use. That's the whole idea of the line of credit. We're going to use $700,000 of that tomorrow. I mean, it's not likely we'll borrow over $2 million.
No, I hear it, but I'm not prepared to sign a $2 million agreement tonight and extend it without getting some answers to these questions. I understand that we may have to do that a week from now, but if we're going to do it, I want to know the answers to these questions and a plan so that, as you say, we don't just keep kicking this ball down the road somehow.
I agree.
So, you want to make a motion?
We can change it back to $1,007,000, if that's what you want to do, or on what we had last year.
I would be.
The point is, this old one's got to be paid off, or they laid already.
Okay.
So, if I can make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I move that we extend the line of credit that we approved six weeks ago at 1.7 million through August 15th, and that we hold a special meeting a week from tonight to address the underlying questions. And I would ask that those three things that I asked for at least be included in that report, along with whatever Jonathan and Jim think we need in addition to that.
I just want to confirm. So, you wanted a cash flow analysis, month by month?
For the last year.
Okay.
And another one projecting for the coming year.
Okay.
And what was my third thing?
Interest.
Thank you. Yes. What's the, what are the interest payments we're projecting, and how are we budgeting for them? Thank you.
We haven't budgeted.
I got that. But that answer isn't going to fly a week from now. We're going to have, together, it's not your job necessarily, it may be our job, we've got to figure out how we're going to deal with that problem.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Going forward, you've got to budget as a line of credit.
Right.
It's an expense, right?
If we budget, if the council budget expense, and they budget revenue, that's the expense. And we're not getting in the revenue if we budget. The department may, may come out even on the expense part, and if the revenue was not coming in to meet that, then we've got a problem.
Has a motion? Is there a second?
I just want to be clear now. Are you asking for a line of credit from $1,007?
Until August 15th.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay. Second.
Motion, any second, any comments?
Yep.
Further discussion? I have a hit list of things that I'm also going to need, but I can just do nothing and review those or talk to you about it. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried, and the motion is going to.
May I?
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye. May. Aye.
So if I'm, are you going to retype this? Or do you want me to just put 1.7 and initial at, everybody initial at bottom, 1.7 is your call? Do you want to give us a first?
Yeah, I'll go with a very small. I don't know.
On Madam Mayor, what is the interest rate?
It's a 4, what is the interest rate?
4.72.
4.72.
4.72?
Yep.
Will they still give, the city Madam Mayor, will they still get the same interest at 1.7 as 2 million?
I hope so. I think.
Well, it probably, usually they're consistent, but if there's an issue, they'll run us.
But it sounds, it sounds like you're not 100% sure? I just want to make sure that's.
That's correct. We're not 100% sure. We have to verify it with the.
I just want to make sure that is.
No, you're right. Yeah, you don't want me to write the letter and say, oh my God, Chris cut this from.
Exactly.
No, right, totally. We don't know, and maybe before you're ready to print, we can have that information. Maybe you could find out.
We're 99% sure, but.
Yeah. But maybe you could find out. Okay. So we're still here. City manager, any new business?
I don't have any new business.
Okay, I do. The president and the council and I were visited today by the Happy Campers, right? That's what they call themselves. And they have invited the council to the Happy Campers Breakfast at Proudly Beach at 9 o'clock on Saturday, right? On Saturday. They have a couple of other events that they have invited us to, but I'm going to be bringing those up once in August and so on, so late now. Happy Campus Breakfast, Proudly Beach at 9 o'clock on Saturday. Next item on the agenda is old business. President Fashon?
Nothing.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
Yes.
Okay.
A little bit of a lengthy thing, but it'll address questions. This is regarding the criminal complaint. First off, I had the authority as a resident or as a councilman to report my concerns of potential illegal conduct to law enforcement. I asked the legal division of the Montley of Cities and Towns, if I noticed something happening on the council which may be illegal, could I refer to law enforcement? I received an email from the BLCT attorney. Anyone can make a complaint to law enforcement about an alleged crime. Regarding the history of Clark Curtis' appointment to council, his appointment was on April 15th, 2024. I received an email on April 18th, 2024, from former councillor Dan Ross that it is incompatible position for Title 17 VSA 2647 for a councillor to be a constable. I sent an email to the entire council on April 18th, 2024, informing them his appointment was prohibited by law, specifically Title 17 VSA 2647, that I had received this information from Dan Ross. The mayor and the council ignored this notice and did nothing. At the April 25th, 2024 special council, I raised the issue under old business. Again, the mayor and the council ignored this blatant statute violation and did nothing. A letter appears in the Newport Daily Express. I don't have the exact date. That again raised the issue of council services appointment to council. The mayor and the council did nothing. At the May 6th, 2024 council meeting, the illegal appointment of Councilman Curtis, Constable, was not on the agenda, nor was it discussed at the meeting. Ultimately, Councilman Curtis resigned as council on May 20th, 2024. It should be noted that our city attorneys were contacted by the mayor multiple times. They confirmed that it was an incompatible position, thereby adding to the city's legal bills. During this process, I became aware of information that led me to believe that illegal conduct was taking place. It was for this reason I contacted law enforcement on June 7th, 2024. I have not, and will not, disclose the nature of the conduct reported because it is an ongoing investigation. Excuse me for a second. The mayor has announced in their June 18th, 2024, from the desk of mayor, that there was a possible conflicting statute and that Councilman Curtis may be appointed as second constable, which he is considering. Our charter, however, authorizes one constable. Councilman Curtis is unfit to be constable or second constable. A constable has the law enforcement powers. As such, this position should be filled with an individual with integrity, ethics, and a commitment to compliance with the law. Mr. Curtis has seen none of these. Mr. Curtis has been sued 20 times in small claims court. Parties that have sued Mr. Curtis include reputable businesses, including Worth's Cutter, Ace Ford, and Pick and Shop. On March 4th, 2019, Mr. Curtis was charged with felony vulnerable adult, vulnerable adult financial exploitation greater than 500 in common terms investment. This case was resolved with diversion referral. On August 14th, 2019, the Department of Disabilities, Aging, and Independent Living substantiated that Mr. Curtis, as a legal guardian of his mother, exploited a vulnerable adult pursuant to Title 33 VSA 6906 subsection C. This public information was obtained through local court, through the public portal. That was substantiated my earlier statement that he's unfit to be constable. Give these to you.
You're done? Councilmember? You're done?
I am done.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing.
Councilmember Ufford Chase?
Nothing done.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
City manager?
Just, there was one comment on Clark's about the city manager report update. So I'm just polishing it off. I received one update over the weekend, so I'm just polishing it off and you'll get it tomorrow morning.
Thank you. So I have some old business. We had our liaison positions out there, and the president of the council and I went through and finalized the rotations so that we can rotate our council liaisons. And we finished them through, from July 1 through the end of March 1. So July 1 to October 1, the mayor will become the liaison to the police. Councilmember Ufford Chase will become the liaison to the fire department. Councilmember Fashon, and I will shoot an email out with all of these, or in fact, the city manager, who would do this when I'm not. The councilmember Fashon for the rec department. Councilmember Charbonneau for zoning. Councilmember Curtis for DPW. October 1 to January 1, the mayor will become the liaison for zoning. Councilmember Ufford Chase to DPW. Councilmember Fashon for the police. Councilmember Charbonneau for the fire department. Councilmember Curtis for the rec department. And then from January 1 to March 1, the mayor will be the liaison for the fire department. Councilmember Ufford Chase for the police. Councilmember Fashon for DPW. Councilmember Charbonneau for the rec department. And councilmember Curtis for so. Next item on the agenda is to. Yes? No? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to set the regularly scheduled council meeting for July 15th, 2024. May I have a motion to set that meeting? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda, so I hear a motion to adjourn the regular meeting at 8:55 PM. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is.